Appreciate that very much so. Huh? Is that better? Okay. Sorry, technical difficulties. Okay. So if everyone would please stand, we're gonna have a moment of silent prayer and then I'm gonna ask the gentleman to come up. Amen? If you gentlemen would come up and lead us in the pledge, just come on up here to the podium. You can all come up and do it. It's not hard. You ready? There you go. Yeah, there's a lot of pressure. We don't bite.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love it that you took charge, young man. Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Coulter?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Knight?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mr. Tankersley is absent with notice.
Thank you.
Sure.
Approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes that we received in our packets?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Um, there is a correction under council committees. Uh, under the first one there, community development, uh, that should read that the next meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission will be, and then it should be Wednesday, February 9th, 2022 at 6:30. But, uh, the one word. Uh, that should be the next community committee meeting. 2022.
Opened up our correction.
Okay.
Those are the minutes. To make an adjustment. Okay. So that would have been Wednesday, February 9th, and we will make that. Community.
Was that?
Committee meeting.
That's his committee. Me to take care. Okay. All right. Thank you for that correction, Mr. Wilson. We do appreciate it.
You're welcome. I blame it on Glenn.
All right. With no other corrections, um, or additions, seeing none, those will be corrected and then accepted. Thank you. Um, reports of communication. Mayor Hardman?
So the first thing that I know you probably all want to join me in thanking and congratulating our great public work staff for a fantastic job that they did over the Thursday and Friday and little bits of the weekend that they had to deal with as far as this winter ice storm, I think you can sufficiently call it an ice storm, uh, for what they had to deal with. I'm gonna just give Thursday morning, I went to work in Lebanon, um, and was there until 2:45 or so when I was able to come home. Uh, when I left Lebanon at 2:45, I did not see a piece of pavement, uh, from, uh, there, uh, all the way to Cornell Road, uh, until I hit the Sharonville Line. Uh, and then even then, I can't, our guys did a great job. I finally saw some pavement. It wasn't completely clear, but I actually finally saw some pavement. So, uh, that's just, uh, I think what that says is a ton of, it says a ton about the people that work for us here in this city, the pride they take and the job they do, uh, in getting our folks and our businesses and our people around, uh, this city and getting folks to work where they need to be and getting people out of their houses. And, uh, I just wanna thank them. They sent around obviously a ton of information for all of you, uh, earlier today about, uh, statistics, about how much salt they used, how much, uh, calcium was used, uh, you know, our eight trucks, our, but the most important and biggest piece of that is our 17 people, uh, and the 312 and a half hours, uh, that they worked, uh, to make sure that we aren't trapped in our homes, uh, or trapped in our businesses and we can get around this city. So, uh, I wanna offer my thanks to all of them for their 3,000, over 3,000 miles that they drove over those two days. Um, I know that they appreciate all of the kudos that you give to them, uh, 'cause they really do take great pride in what they do. And, uh, it shows, and so keep talking good about them so we can continue to be, uh, the shining example in our region, 'cause I think we are, we truly are. I've seen it. Um, we also sent around, so, you know, as, as the weather got to 47 degrees today, it makes sense to talk about Fourth of July, right?
Why would we not?
So, so Vicki sent around, uh, information about, um, Fourth of July as we start thinking and planning for that. Uh, last year, obviously, was the first time in, uh, a decade plus, uh, that we had fireworks, 'cause we found a location where we could shoot them off. Uh, it was a successful event, uh, but what was not successful was the parade portion of that event. Uh, we knew, uh, in the days leading up to the event, there was some chatter about, uh, the parade and lack of it being downtown, uh, or lack of having one, or whatever the case may be. So we wanna get you involved in that discussion. Uh, we want you to hopefully involve other residents, uh, and, and people you represent in that discussion, uh, as we make determinations about what we do this year. Historically, what occurred is, is, you know, when we stopped doing fireworks, I told our staff, "What creative thing can you come up with, um, that will make people wanna come and be part of this parade and do things?" 'Cause the parade usually led to events that led to fireworks. Uh, and that is what started the Depot Square festivities with hot dogs and the T-shirts or some kind of giveaway over the years. Uh, and so the funds that we use for fireworks went into doing that. Fireworks are here now, if we wish to do them. The funds that we would use for a little festival, go to that. Uh, and the funds aren't just for the festivities at Depot Square, but a lot of it is our staff, uh, and the staff time and the staff hours to do that. So, we, uh, we have spoken, when we started the conversations with Princeton, about doing fireworks again. The plan would be to do those Sunday, July the 3rd. Um, and the idea, or the conversation is to do a bigger celebration leading into those fireworks. But the question is, what does that mean as far as a parade? It's not really successful to do it at Chester Road. It wasn't successful last year. I wouldn't expect that it would be successful again. Um, so the question that you all need to help give me in, in your conversations amongst your committees, or however you wish to do that, and getting your input from, from your residents and constituents is, what do we wanna do with that? Um, and do we wanna put more money into, uh, two different events? Do we not wanna do fireworks? Is that not something we wanna do? Or we're happy with getting rid of those all together, uh, and wanna just stick with a July 4th parade and festivity afterward? Uh, do we want to do a July 3rd firework and evening festivities and then come back and do a parade on July 4th with nothing afterward, just a parade? Do we wanna put money and effort into doing both? That's the direction that I need from all of you. Uh, I don't have a good answer to that, honestly, 'cause I don't have a good feel of what our, what our people want on this topic, 'cause I don't think Facebook and social media is the best barometer of, of what the majority of people want to do, uh, for July 4th. Um, I, I thought it was awesome that we were able to do fireworks last year. I thought they got a very good reception. Um, but it does pose some difficulty. So, and it's just time for us to make a tough decision about what we do or don't do and what kind of money we wanna put together with that. So, uh, hopefully, so my question, so it was very nice to see some of your initial feedback from Vicki's, Vicki's, um, comment. What I think really needs to happen, and this is a community services committee decision, uh, is that the community service committee needs to set a meeting date, uh, and have this as one of their primary objectives on the agenda, involve Michael, involve Anna, who are both already, and the throes of making those plans, so they really need to have these conversations with you, uh, as they make them. Uh, and then, and also to get together, you know, what we, what they need to do as well, would be able to give you some idea of cost and what's associated with that. So, you know, this is what it would cost to, to do this, to do this, and to do this, uh, and this is what we have budgeted now to do this, based on what, what is in our budget. So, uh, I think what we presented to you budget-wise would be doing the fireworks again on July 3rd, um, and.
We did do the T-shirts last year.
We did T-shirts as part of.
At the rec center. Everyone was invited down to the rec center to get their T-shirts.
Right. They got them early. And I think, I think it still had a few.
Yeah.
I'm wrong. I think it still had a few as of that event, but, yeah, there still was a giveaway, T-shirt giveaway that, that took place, and obviously people wore them for the, for the little parade that we did and stuff. So, but it's something that needs to involve more than just, uh, uh, the handful of us that have been involved in that discussion so far. Um, so I, I don't know if you have a community services meeting scheduled yet, uh, but if you don't, hopefully you'll get one, uh, and, uh, in the near future. And, but, but more importantly, I would just encourage everyone, uh, to reach out to, to people you know in the community. Talk about it. Get some feedback from them about what they liked or didn't like about what we did and, you know, and have those conversations about, this is, there's a cost associated with all of that, and at what point is, you know, too much, too much. Um, and, uh, from, and, and again, I'm less worried, dollar figures we can probably, we can currently make happen. I'm not gonna say we can always make happen. Dollar figures I know we can make happen. It's, it's stat.
People.
Uh, and it is the big issue. 'Cause when you've, when you're talking about a holiday weekend, and if we're gonna take up two days of somebody's holiday weekend and the overtime that's associated with it, that's not really fair to our staff. But, um, but again, those are all conversations that, that we need to have, and I think it's best that you have them, uh, in your committee to have that discussion, uh, and, um, the more people involved, the better.
And if you've not given your input, um, please do so.
Well, I think our, our Boy Scout troop 803 that, that has come and led us in our, uh, our pledge this evening, we're glad they're here. I, I think they're working on probably one of their badge requirements as they are here, uh, this evening. Uh, a couple of those faces I know from when they were little Cub Scouts, um, including the one that stood up there and did that pledge. Way to go, Jonathan Atrock.
Good! Yay!
So, uh, a, a future Eagle, hopefully, right? How many, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? How many of you, so I got, so I know Jordan and Jonathan, you guys are both sophomores, are you right, or? Jordan's a junior. Close to an Eagle? How close? Would all those guys back there say the same thing? Yeah? All right. Right? Working on a project yet? Anyone else? You got anyone else out there in the troop that's close? Yeah? What's your name, young man? Nick? And you are, what grade are you, what grade are you in? You're a sophomore. All right. You got a project yet? All right. Well, I hope that, I hope that all of you that are out there make it, and I, I can't wait to give you a proclamation and, and celebrate with you when that happens. So I know it's quite, quite an honor, and it's a great institution for you all to be a part of, and I think you got a great group of leaders that are back there to help lead you on your way. So glad to have you here tonight. Hopefully you're learning a little bit about city business and, and, uh, call any one of us if you have opinions about parades and fireworks for the Fourth of July, all right?
Let us know. We wanna know.
They would. Yeah. All right. That's all I have for this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Safety Service Director, Mr. Lucas?
Nothing about the legislation this evening. Ordinance 2022-11E deals with our Gorman Park renovation, specifically the demolition of the pool, pool house, and schoolhouse. Scott's here this evening to talk about the financial, um, impacts of the legislation.
Good evening. Uh, yeah. Ordinance, uh, 2022-11E appropriates 411, uh, 401 capital funds, uh, along with authorizing the, uh, Safety Service Director to accept bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for that project. This is for demolition of the, the old, uh, schoolhouse at the park. Also, I'll touch on, um, ordinance 2022-13E. Uh, this is kind of referred to as a, a then and now, um, legislation. Uh, this is to, relates to, uh, some professional services we had done, uh, last year. The invoices for those services were more than we had on a purchase order by more than $3,000. And, and amount less than $3,000, I, I initial off on myself to say, to document that we had the money then and we have the money now. And, um, so this, uh, this overages in excess of that, so we wanted to bring this legislation so we can move forward with getting, uh, that processed. Any questions about either one of those?
Anybody? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ordinance 2022-12E deals with the purchase of turnout gear. This was included in the 2022 budget. Chief Sunderman's here this evening to discuss why it's an emergency tonight. It is needed to be an ordinance, however, because it's over $25,000.
Good evening all. If I can change topic very, very briefly, I wanna give a shout out to the Boy Scouts as well. I myself am an Eagle Scout, and three months ago, the good mayor swore me in as the, uh, fire chief. And believe me, those two things are related. So. Good luck, uh, to those Eagles. It shows he can really stick to it, and that, that's, that's important. So I'm glad to see you here. Um, so this is emergency legislation for $35,000 for turnout gear. Uh, the reason we have this in as an emergency is there is going to be a cost increase of 12%. Uh, our manufacturer was able to hold that off until the end of February for us, as opposed to putting it in July, or January 1st, excuse me. So it saves us about $4,200, um, spending the entire $35,000 now on turnout gear.
Does anyone have, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah. Just very quickly, what is turnout gear? I, ignorant, I don't know.
Uh, it, so the turnout gear is the boots and pant, or the pants and coat that we wear into fires. Um, and, uh, I can distinctly remember when it hit the $2,000 mark per set, and I thought, there's no way it's ever gonna get higher than that. And now we're at about $2,700 per set, and it only lasts 10 years. It has a 10-year service life, whether it's on our body or on a shelf.
Anyone else?
I would also appreciate your comment on the Velcro versus magnetic when you were talking about that at Law Committee.
Yeah. We, we talked in Law Committee, our manufacturer worked with us. We spend a lot of money replacing Velcro closures on our turnout gear. That Velcro goes bad, we have to repair it, obviously by code. They have come up with a way to make that a magnetic closure, which thankfully should save us money in repair over the years.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Resolution 2022-R3 is only a first reading tonight, but because Chief Nesbit's here for a late delivery item as well, um, I might have, ask him to talk about dedicating the police department after Chief Vanover.
Thank you. Yeah. Everybody knows Chief Vanover passed recently in September. And one of the first ideas that crossed our mind was how do we best honor him? That idea, uh, culminated in a proposal to dedicate the building in his name, and this resolution asks for permission to do that. He was instrumental in the design and construction of the building, and, uh, we greatly appreciated his input and his guidance and his leadership in that time. We worked with the architect to come up with a proposed design if, uh, if, if it were to be approved, and Pam Vanover worked with us to come up with a better design and better wording for it. We would like to proceed with that, uh, if it is, if it's passed. We would like to do it around, uh, May, which is Police Week, and it's also Steve's birthday on the 5th.
Oh, wow.
So we'd like to coincide all that together.
Any questions? Thank you.
We do have a late delivery request that Chief can talk about, uh, regarding a purchase of.
I thought you could have just about anything you want.
Okay. Appreciate that.
The purchase of two vehicles, and we'll explain why it's an emergency this evening as well.
So when we came up with the budget for last year, we didn't realize that Ford Motor Company, uh, working through all the turmoil in manufacturing, is going to close out the ordering window this Friday. Actually found that out Monday, uh, and it was quite a shock to us, that they have never used a February date to do that to us. But typically what happens is there's a significant pay or cost increase for vehicles following the closing of the window, and sometimes it takes many months before they open that back up. So if we were to miss this window, we may be waiting until this time next year to actually get this year's cars, and they can cost as much as 12% more. Uh, we've seen that, an increase like that. So if we could move forward, uh, again, apologize for the short notice, but if we could move forward that purchase, we think we could save some money and a whole lot of time.
Are there any questions? I will say that Law Committee was, um, emailed about this, and it was 100% that nobody had a problem taking the late deliveries. So, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Now, the question, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Pull up the night. Um, the Ford Police Interceptor Utility, how, how, how is that used?
So it's, it's the Ford, it looks just like a Ford Explorer. Uh, it's just in the police interceptor package. So the police package will come with a ballistic shield in the driver's door for officer safety. It comes with increased braking power. The hybrid model, uh, is a primary electric car, so it greatly reduces our gas consumption drastically. I, I can't even begin to describe how much it reduces our, our fuel consumption. So there's a great deal of value in that. The cost of the vehicle is slightly more than the traditional vehicle, but the enhanced performance of it, since it's, uh, driven by an electric motor, it has better braking, better handling at high-end speeds. Uh, the vehicle itself is primarily just a Ford Explorer with enhanced features like braking and.
Basically, the police cruiser is that?
That's exactly what it is, sir.
I'm just, and, you know, for me, you know, hybrids, if we drive, we, you know, we put gas in it, then take off like a police car does. You know?
These.
Wondering if that's, you know, if that makes much of a difference.
This will be the third year we've bought the hybrid vehicles, and we are seeing that their performance actually outperforms the gas vehicles. Their braking is better, their acceleration is better. Overall, their handling is better.
Mr. Wilson? Feel free to call him and go for a ride.
No.
Neat.
They have professionals that'll drive you. Yeah.
Take it on 275.
You better take the old ones out.
That's probably a better idea.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Lovett?
Can I just clarify? This is, this is 82,004, two cruisers.
Two cruisers.
So $41,000 a cruiser?
That's correct.
Yeah.
It seems like a deal to me.
Mr. Cook?
All right. Uh, so I'm gonna make sure I'm clearing this. If for some reason we order these two and a week later, one of the cruisers is damaged beyond repair. Are we gonna be short and can you not order? I, I'm trying to get out, would we behoove, and I'm all about saving taxpayer dollars, but would it behoove us to get another one?
I will never say no to another car.
All right. So, so for me, it's a, it's a risk assessment. So i- if a cruiser was damaged beyond repair, would we be short one for, if so, for what period of time?
With that in mind, with that risk assessment, uh, approach, the Finance Director and I worked through a plan to deal with that last year. Currently on order are fleet replacement vehicles that could be inserted in to make a rapid replacement for a disabled, damaged, or inoperable group police car. So these cars, we know will be many months down the line. When they arrive, it will just basically be, we're transferring one to the next, so we're rolling over the cars. So we actually won't go short. We will, we will have that built-in safety net for breakdowns, crashes, whatever could go wrong. We've, we've already put a process in place to, to make that possible.
Okay. So I feel better. If you're comfortable with it, I, it's just something that came to mind, and once again, I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Always take three if you want.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it this evening.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. For my report, I just wanna piggyback on the mayor and say thank you, huge thank you to our Public Works Department. They delivered my, um, crock pot things back tonight and said they were prepared for the next, uh, snow emergency, and for me to be prepared for the next snow emergency. I make them chili. So. So they, they, they were very much so appreciated, but they wanted me to extend their gratitude to, um, Mr. Lovett as he took them in doughnuts. So that was very much so appreciated, um, just your thoughtfulness. So they said, "Thank you." Uh, that's all of my report this evening. We'll move on to our Clerk of Council, Ms. Booheit.
Thanks. Uh, there is a public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, February 23rd at 7:00 PM regarding the rezoning of, um, a portion of E Businessway.
It's gonna be a busy night. Yes.
The notes say the 22nd. Is it 22nd or 23rd? 22nd?
Jeez. I'm just testing all of you, and you guys are passing. Congratulations. It is the 22nd.
Thank you, Terry.
It's, it's during our council meeting?
So it'll be a seven. We're not meeting early then?
No.
Okay.
No. We'll, we'll open the meeting up for that, and then we'll close that. If no one has anything to say, it takes usually about two minutes. And that evening, please remember, we're swearing at a bunch of firemen, and then our new fire chief is going to give his first report, so we're anxiously looking forward to that. Anything else, Ms. Booheit?
No.
I can make them, I can turn their mics off.
I'm about saying another word.
I can, I can turn their mics off if you would like. Um, we'll move on to our Law Director, Mr. Lippert.
Thank you very much. Uh, in addition to the kudos for Public Works, uh, wanna commend the Fire Department for their quick action up at Mallard Cove. Um, I think those of you got the email about the, uh, gas leak that they acted very quickly on, so that was really good. Um, most of you should remember when Mr. Pete Meyer talked about the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding that we, uh, voted in as a, as a legislative body. Had to do with the settlement of opioid abuse legislation by pharmaceutical manufacturers. So I attended a, uh, web seminar yesterday that had to do with how those funds are gonna be distributed, and 55% of the funds are gonna be through a 501(c)(3) foundation with the state of Ohio, where the state of Ohio has been broken up into, I wanna say, 18 regions. We are region number two. And, um, there is currently going on, what, what is the regional governance gonna be for each region? So if you are interested in being involved in that regional governance, let me know, and, um, I'll reach out to the people coordinating that. Uh, it also involves not only elected officials, public officials, but also, uh, private stakeholders within the region. So anybody watching out there on ICRC? So anybody watching out there on ICRC who's interested, just reach out. And that's it. And basically, what happens is the regional governance elects a regional representative for this foundation, and the foundation decides how to use this money for projects across the state of Ohio. That's separate from the percentage of money that is devoted to cities, villages, and townships that we may see some of as well. Nobody has any questions? Hude, that's my report.
There you go. No questions? Okay, we're at that time now. Any residents or anyone that wishes to be heard this evening is welcome to come up. Give us your name and your address. Gotta love you, you got that Viking shirt on.
I was gonna wear my Bengal gear, but I thought this would be appropriate.
Well, I wore my Bengal gear, but I'm a Viking at heart.
Thank you. My name is Mike Eck, and my family moved to Sharonville in 1958, so I grew up on Wolfley. And I was a classmate at Princeton with Sue and folks like Ernie and Scott Donnelly. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to represent the Class of 72, and as well as the Princeton Education Foundation, which I understand some of you here have served over the years. The gala, the major fundraising event, is coming up, March 12th, 2022, at the Delta Hotel Marriott on Chester Road. And we're asking each village or city to offer its support to its residents, to its businesses, to the faith community, to help us make it a successful event. And then finally, the final message is that there are eight trustees. I think the bylaws say there could be 17. We have a changing of the guard. Three of the trustees are terming out soon, so we're looking for new volunteer trustees, especially the treasurer. So if you know of anybody, we would appreciate. And I'm the newbie on the foundation and started, I think it was October, September, October last year or so. I'm happy to take any questions.
Good for you.
If there are any.
Mike, I can tell you that I recently sent out an email and fleeced these good gentlemen and ladies for money for a basket from the city of Sharonville.
Thank you.
Normally, what we do is we like to buy local, so we get gift cards or local products that are made or sold in Sharonville, and we put it all together in a wonderful basket, and I take it over there and give it to somebody. Usually, it's been Susan Wyler or Carmen Taylor Daniels, who I graduated with.
You graduated with Carmen?
I did.
Wonderful.
So we are on it. I don't know that we have a table. I do know we have members here that will probably go through music boosters or other organizations too, is how they sometimes get their tables. Unfortunately, I'm not able to attend this year, and I'm heartbroken over that, but we are working on our basket as we speak.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anybody else?
All right, I'll leave this.
Thank you. Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Tim Schmidt, 1-2-2-1-5 Pickwick Place. And I just want to, as a resident, follow up with Mayor Hartman, President Hoppy, Mr. Lippert, as far as what a great job Public Works did. I know this incident was a whole lot worse than the one prior, and they did a very, very good job on this incident. And I just wanted, as a resident, to thank them for a great job they did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Bonzell, 840 Vaness Drive in Glendale, as we call it.
Glendale, yes.
Ohio, a couple of weeks. So I just wanted to say hi to everyone and introduce myself. I'm gonna be running for State Representative for this district as of now, if that's the district that stays. But I definitely appreciate getting to know you and work with you, especially for issues that are dealing with Sharonville and the state of Ohio. I worked closely with you when I was the County Commissioner with the expansion of the convention center and other issues that you had. So Sharonville's got a special place in my heart, because that's where my parents have been living for the last 20 years. And they are so blessed to have some great neighbors who've taken care of them. And just always, I hear every day when I talk to my parents about, you know, somebody helped this, helped that, and it's just, you guys got a great, great community and very blessed. So I just want to introduce myself, and again, I'd love to work with you in the future as we progress down the road. But thanks again, and God bless. Have a good night.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else? Any of you? Come on up. Oh, okay. Okay, well, I was gonna say, you're more than welcome to do it now. We don't mind. Are you gonna make these poor kids stay the whole time? Oh, bless your hearts. I'm so sad. If I'd have known you were coming, I'd have brought cookies. Huh? All right, who's got it? One of you guys want to talk about Sharon? Do you guys all live in Sharonville? No. No. Handful of you live in Sharonville? All right. Who wants to be the next mayor, president of council? I knew it. I, you're mine. You can go ahead. Yeah, that's fine. You gotta do, are you allowed to do something again?
4124 Carriage Light Drive, and I happen to be a committee member of the troop. And I'm gonna twist Nick's arm to come up here. Honestly, I wrote this up between last night and this morning, so nobody knows about this.
Okay.
Nobody, not even you guys know about this, including him.
Including Nick.
But he doesn't even know about it yet.
Nick's not your son, is he?
And you were the one that put an idea in my mind the last time we were here.
Uh-huh.
It was a very quiet night. There was nothing going on, and you twisted our arms to come up here, and nobody moved. So, Nick, I want you to come up here. Let's see, we have this.
Is that when the boys ask us how much we made, and none of us knew?
Now, Ms. Hoppy is the president of council, and then they have Mayor Hartman. So, you know, the president trumps the mayor all the time. Got to remember that.
I control the money. He controls the employees. There's a difference.
There you go. I want you to know that I am behind you the whole way.
Be nice, Nick, and we may give you projects to do for your Eagle Scouts. I mean, we're all connected, we all know, and I've got a former Eagle Scout down here, an Eagle Scout with Mr. Lovett, and he did a project of one of our parks. Cemeteries, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was about 100 pounds of lawfare.
All right, Nick, go.
Okay, Nick, how can we help you?
Scout Sharonville Troop 803 would like the members of Sharonville City Council to consider and vote on a resolution to have the members of the Sharonville City Council join the troop on our April campout on April 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
I ain't scared. I've got a cabin in the woods. And when you go to my cabin, you hear banjos playing, and probably none of you know what that means. The old people do. When is that, April what?
22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Are women allowed?
Sure. Continue on, there's more, there's more places in there, so, you know.
The schedule of events is we leave on Friday, April 22nd, from Brecon United Methodist Church on Kemper Road at 6:00 PM, and please have dinner before leaving. And we'll carpool to Possum Run Campsite in the Dayton Metro Parks near Germantown, Ohio. And on arrival, unload the trailer, set up camps, hand patrol boxes, and get the evening campfire started. And after Night on the Stars, we'll have a hot breakfast prepared by scouts. And after breakfast, we'll be hiking around the area, and this is an area that we use for a couple of our Philmont training hikes. This time, there'll be a lot more leisurely hike with just a day pack. After our hike, we'll return to the campsite where the scouts will prepare a wonderful gourmet meal, followed by an evening campfire. And on Sunday, we'll break camp, load the trailer, have a cold breakfast, and return to Brecon by 10:00. And the troop will provide food and tents for the weekend, but you need to bring your own sleeping bag, sleeping pad, plate, knife, fork, spoon, and personal gear. And adults are allowed to bring a folding chair for comfort, and Mother Nature will provide the scenery and star-filled night. So come out, enjoy a wonderful weekend outdoors.
There you go. Sounds fun. You okay, Nick?
I don't know at this point.
I'm a little worried about you, Nick. Are you sure you're okay? Because there is a paramedic here. And he's really good.
You did well, Nick. Thank you very much.
Very nice. So you really want all of us old people to go with you?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. All right. Let me see, let me see what that weekend holds for me. I'm not scared, like I told you, although I have a cabin, so I'm used to sleeping indoors. But my cabin's real close to Red River Gorge. Have you heard of that?
Yeah.
I got an 85-foot cliff that goes off the back of my cabin, and we rock climb, so what do y'all got? What? Don't go sleepwalk. Yeah. So no, I'm not scared. I'll do it if I'm not busy that weekend. I've got a grandson that plays slug baseball, but let me check his schedule. All right, who's ponying up?
Unfortunately, I will be.
I'm scared.
Listen to all these excuses. I'm not scared.
I would be up for it, but I will be on the, I will be at the happiest place on earth. Walt Disney World, yes.
Thank you. Well, you sent me your contact information, okay? My name's all, it's out there all over Sharonville's website and everything, so you know how to get a hold of me, all right?
All right.
See, I'm not looking for boats, I'm looking for fun. Is there any kayaking going on? Do we kayak on this trip? Just a hiking trip? Okay. All right. Let me know when you go kayaking. I got my own. Is there anyone else? Any of you guys have any other ideas? Nope? Okay. We'll move on then to our council committees. Community Development, Mr. Wilson?
Just a reminder that tomorrow night is the second Wednesday of the month, and that means it's the night for BZA and Planning Commission meetings starting at 6:30. Mr. Creach sent out an agenda to all the elected officials, so.
Perfect.
Should be an exciting night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Community Services, Mr. Lovett?
My report is with Ms. Buhight. From there, I just want to say, number one, hude. Great game this, last week I got to go, so that was awesome game. Unfortunately, can't go to the Super Bowl because I have kids. Also, I want to say, you gentlemen, continue to push. I am, you know, an Eagle Scout, as Ms. Hoppy said, and it was a lot of hair and about 100 pounds ago. The reality of it is, is it has served me well in my life, as Chief has also stated. It has opened some doors for me that I never imagined it would, so just keep pushing, okay? Because it's gonna get harder and harder as you get. My biggest piece of advice is get it before you get too deep into high school if you can, because females become a factor, and life becomes a factor, and sports become a factor, and arts become a factor, and so if you can get it earlier, the better, okay? But congratulations to all you who continue to push, and I will try to be on the campout. I'll have to see if my RV is not winterized at that point. So anyways, thank you.
I never thought about that. All right, I'm in. Budget and Finance, Mr. Cook?
Thank you. No report, but our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 12th at 6:00 PM. And then moving on to?
Project Oversight.
Project Oversight, no report also, but our next meeting will be Tuesday, March 8th at 6:00 PM, and both those meetings will be in the Administrative Conference Room.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Honored Citizens, Mrs. Knight?
Tonight, I am honoring three groups. I'm officially going to honor the Public Works, since that's my job, for another great ice and snow removal. You did a great job, I can't say enough. Also, I'd like to thank the Police Department for keeping traffic moving during the ice and snow storm. I drive every day three communities to pick up my grandson, and I'm very fearful when I pull out of Sharonville and going to Glendale, then I go into Springdale, and then I go into Forest Park, and I'm very, very, very scared. But by the time I hit that Sharonville line, I know I'm safe, so I just want everybody to know that. The third group I'm gonna honor, the Mount Notre Dame Dance Program, has athletes that live and attend schools in Sharonville. This weekend, I'm honoring the varsity dance team. This past weekend, the varsity dance team competed at the UDA National Championships at the ESPN Worldwide World Wide World of Sports Complex located at Walt Disney World. After dancing six routines, they advanced to the final rounds. They placed eighth in the nation, not the city, the nation, in small varsity palm, and 13th in the nation in small varsity jazz. I just also want to wish good luck to the Mount Notre Dame Junior High and Junior Varsity Team that will be competing in Louisville this upcoming weekend. So go Cougars, Mount Notre Dame Cougars. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'd like to throw one on if I could, and we'll just say congratulations to the Lady Vikings basketball team, co-champions of the Greater Miami Conference, and getting ready to go into state tournament play as one of the favorites to win.
That's awesome.
Yep.
Okay, Law and Public Safety, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. The next Law and Public Safety Committee meeting will be February 15th, 4:00 PM, Administrative Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Late Delivery. Is there a motion to accept late delivery of Emergency Ordinance 202214E? So moved by Mr. Cook, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, and that does carry. We will accept late delivery of that. Now, is there a motion to have rule suspension for first and only reading with immediate effectivity of Emergency Ordinance 202214E, 202211E, 202212E, 202213E? So moved by Mr. Lovett, second by Mr. Coulter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, that motion does carry also, and we will move on to unfinished business.
Okay. This is the second reading of Ordinance 202210, rezoning property located along the north side of E Businessway, a portion of auditor parcel number 608003005, from general business to public facilities.
And then we'll move on to new business.
All right. First and only reading of Ordinance 202211E, amending 2022 appropriations for the 401 Capital Fund and authorizing the Safety Service Director to accept bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the demolition work at Gorman Park and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass Ordinance 202211E? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 202211E has been approved. First and only reading of Emergency Ordinance 202212E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for the purchase of turnout gear for the Sharonville Fire Department and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass Ordinance 202212E? So moved by Mr. Lovett, second by Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency Ordinance 202212E has been approved. First and only reading of Emergency Ordinance 202213E, authorizing payment for purchases which were ordered without prior certificate by Sharonville Fiscal Officer. which were ordered without prior certificate by Sharonville Fiscal Officer.
Is there a motion to pass Ordinance 202213E? So, moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Coulter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 202213E has been approved. First and only reading of Emergency Ordinance 202214E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for the purchase of two vehicles for the Sharonville Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass Ordinance 202214E? So, moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency Ordinance 202214E has been approved. This is a first reading of Resolution 2022R03, honoring Chief Stephen R. Vanover by dedicating